Good evening.
Hey.
You like laughing at me? Here I am. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good evening.
Hey.
You like laughing at me? Here I am. Congratulations.
Good standing for the prayer and the pledge. Father, we've come again now thanking you for life, health, and strength. We come thanking you right now this day. We come thanking you for how you've taken care of from the horizon this morning to the going down of the sun. We thanking our Father for what you're going to do for us. We pray for you with God as in your leadership, but we might be able to do the same because it's right, right in your sight. Father, let us be mindful that we're here to serve. And with that attitude, Father, we can do what's right for all of us. And we thank you now. Father, we asking you take care of famines, sickness, whatever it might be. You know all about it. Father, you even knew it before the foundation of world. This day we will be here, and we will be asking you for grace and mercy. This be asking bless you now and goodness in my prayer. Amen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Father, I mean, as a few little housekeepers. This meeting, conference line has been set up in the numbers one dash nine one seven, nine zero zero, one zero three two, back to tow is thirty-two, thirty-four, seven. This is not a toll free number. You may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance. When the chairperson open the meeting for public comment, please follow the instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial five. The moderator will unmute your line when you're trying to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item would be given three minutes to speak, and they only speak one time each item on their agenda. With that being said.
Excuse me, did you say that you need to take something to be able to get on the agenda?
If you was calling in, you would call.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
All right. We go to item three on the agenda. The clerk to present a report of boat ramp citations.
So I have the first couple items, which is mostly informational items. You guys, they're in your packets. Usually annually, I give you a report of the boat ramp citations that we do. And so this is actually last year, which is January through December of two thousand twenty-one. So you can see there that we had a total of sixty-nine citations that were filed last year. And we get a lot, I get a lot of requests for dismissals. And we try to work with people if they can prove that they paid and for some reason they got a citation by mistake. But usually it's because they forgot to display their hanger or their.
Chat.
They just, sometimes they put their sticker in a different place. People put them all over the place. People put them behind the tent, and you can't hardly see them. Sometimes when you know these big vehicles are really tall, you know, they're kind of hard to see if they're sitting hanging in the window and things like that. So but we have a list of all the envelopes and the numbers and dues paid and the annual permits and dues paid. And so we're trying to work with people on that. But so we do get some other things I get is, well, I launched in Dixie County and I parked over there, so I shouldn't have to pay the fee. I get that all the time. Or all I did was launch my boat and I parked somewhere else, so I shouldn't have to pay the fee. I get that kind of stuff. I get, we didn't know you were supposed to do anything. I get that too. And also we get a lot of, well, I launched my boat first, and then I went and parked, went back and got my, paid my five dollars, and by the time I got back, I had a citation on my vehicle. So anyway, there was, there were, there have been a few suggestions, and I think probably, you know, at another time, maybe we need to just think about our workshop, talking about maybe kind of doing things a little bit differently. One would be like maybe kiosks for payments or QR codes or something like that. Maybe, I know there is a suggestion because of where the box is, the steam hatchy, if we can move it to the, where everybody enters at, then people could pay and get this in before they actually launch the boat. Now, it's kind of like right where you launch the boat at. A lot of people are hurrying and trying to get out of other people's way, and they just forget sometimes, or they just don't see it. And so that would sound like a pretty good suggestion, that maybe we could like relocate the box where everybody lines up to go in and, you know, with a big pay here sign and so they could make sure they notice that. So just some ideas like that. So anyway, just, that's just a report of those and just, you know, probably at some other point, we can look at, you know, maybe take a look at some of that stuff and see if we can maybe improve some of it.
One question, do we know anything about costs for kiosks or?
We don't have any, yeah, we don't have any costs on that yet. We have, I've looked at a few, Mark Wiggins, since he says the D.C.A.S. looked at a few options, but we haven't really gotten at any cost yet. So, but we do listen companies, they can handle that. So maybe that's something we can like put on a workshop in the future and try to bring back some information about that.
But I'm assuming with that expense, we could use some of the surplus funds that are available from boat ramp teams.
Right.
So we may very well have the revenues to cover those costs.
Yes. That's it. And I know that, you know, back in two thousand seventeen, board looked at increasing the fee, most, we've been looking around in a bunch of different counties, and ours is the lowest, are a pretty good bid. And I know that, you know, the board in two thousand seventeen tried to address that and ran into some difficulties, but we might want to, you know, look at that again.
What were the difficulties?
What?
What were the difficulties?
I think FWC, we had to do something through FWC maybe at that time, and I don't know if that's still the case or not.
Well, if I can answer it, Gary, I think that we, that Mark Wiggins actually tried to work with FWC, and there were so many steps that you have to go through that it just, it became clear that, or it looked like maybe they wouldn't support that for a public boat ramp, since we did utilize FBI funds to construct both of those ramps.
Yeah, that's still the process.
Probably FWC contributed anything financially to it, but that looks like a mandate with that.
Well, that's in the grant agreement, if I'm not mistaken. It's tied to the grant agreement.
What's it?
How do we compare with other counties? You said you had looked around. Can we just give us some examples of what?
So I know Citrus County, which is a little south of us, their permit is ten dollars daily and twenty-five dollars for a resident, and they charge seventy-five for non-residents, which is one of the problems that we had too. Because of using grant money, we can't charge two different rates than to charge one rate. There was twenty, theirs was twenty-five for the annual pass and ten for a daily pass. Same thing in Palm Beach County. I looked at them because they had a kiosk system there, and it was ten dollars, I believe, for those counties. They had a kiosk too, but I can't remember what their, what their rate was, but it's our dollars.
Yeah, also yours is eight, in boat ramp. Eight dollars.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we would have to justify why we needed more, more money. So as long as we have a reserve, it's, you know, we would have to demonstrate to FWC, isn't that, wasn't that one of the conditions?
Part of the conditions, yes.
Right. Why we, what we, why we would need more money if we have sufficient funding now?
Do you think that's a relationship?
Well, I think we have, well, it may be, because we haven't, we've taken enough revenue to cover our costs as it is. So we would just have to justify why we need more money. And I don't think it's efficient to say, well, because other counties charge more than we feel like we should. I think we would need to demonstrate to FWC why we need the additional funding and what we plan to spend it on, which I don't think is that difficult, but that's something we have to consider.
So if we have reserves, then perhaps that will indicate we may not need to do that, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding.
So have we ever depleted those reserves before?
I don't think we have, because most of the, most of the expansion and things we've done have been done with other grants. So, you know, I mean, I don't, I can't remember, like, some of the dock replacement stuff, did we use grants for that? So we've been able to utilize grants to do a lot of the repairs and replacements and stuff, and you might, I always have that, and you might have to plan some kind of replacement or repair that you might need to fund through, through fees, but.
Well, don't we fund a part of the sheriff's debities for their extra duty out of that?
And for boat ramp attendants.
Yeah, so it seems like to me we could work through that.
I believe we could. I just wanted to mention that since we were on the subject.
We talking about a trail of something down this, you mentioned, right? Is that a boat ramp? They're the whole trail down here.
It's across the street from the boat ramp.
It's, it belongs to the county, I believe. Is it raised up or is it?
It's raised.
It's raised up, but it's not utilized because, I guess you would have to be able.
We would have to install an elevator in order to use it as a public building. Yes. It would have to be ADA compliant, which is why we haven't, you know.
I thought staff was saying that the insides may be beyond repair, but.
I think it would take quite a bit to remodel. And so we waited through another scallop season to try to make a decision about putting it, you know, maybe listing it on the GoDeals site. Obviously, we don't want to create that type of disturbance during fishing or scalping season, but.
All right. Any more questions? The clerk? You ready to go to the next one?
Yep.
Citizen guide to county financial.
So in your packet, is this guy here, and this is something that my office is publishing? And this is actually just the, just the draft of it, but we are, we will be sending it to the printer for a, you know, a nicer, like magazine style version of it. And the idea behind it is, a lot of clerks do this, and the idea behind this is just to be transparent and try to give a summarized view of the county's finances and things that, and things that we're doing and, you know, to give the citizens kind of a, just a summarized view of it. We, we named, we kind of, everybody kind of comes up with a name of theirs, we called up, we kind of came up with Money Doesn't Grow on Trees for ours, just kind of a catchy name, because we are a tree capital in the South. But I don't know how much you guys have a chance to look at it, but, so the idea is, is that every year we would update this document and put things in there that the citizens need to know or that, you know, the message that we need to get out there to them. And we try to do that this year with some things. The first few pages is mostly just, you know, just the information about, about Taylor County and, you know, constitutional officers and then, and then we get into the county funding section of it. That just kind of tells about how the taxes are calculated and the whole process, gives our bills rate. You see there's kind of like a dollar illustration there of, you know, how our tax bills are distributed out there, you know, fifty-one percent to schools, forty percent to the general fund, and seven percent to the MST fund, and two percent to Swan River. You know, we list things like, you know, the top five taxpayers, and then, and then we start giving it to the county's budget. So this is just a summary of, and this is also September thirtieth to twenty-one, so it's, it's data that's that old, but we can't produce this until after the audit report is done, which is June, so it takes us a little while to kind of get it together. Every county deals with that same thing. But that's why, you know, it's taking this, this amount of time, because we can't do it until the audit report, prior report is complete. So this is September the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one date, so that's in that year that's been closed out and the audit report's been done. So, and then we've got like a little snapshot and graph of our revenues and expenditures, and tells a little bit about those. Summarizing the revenues for the citizens. We've got our state and county in that position, which is part of our audit report that's prepared by our auditors. You know, one of the things that, if you flip over to the fuel, the fuel going down to the fuel and gas tax one, one of the things that I thought might be good if it in here in the future is maybe something about the gas taxes, because I know that there is a chart that you can see online, which all the county's gas taxes and tailing money is, I think, one of the less, of those counties that have the lowest gas taxes in the state. Sometimes that's misrepresented. You know, Madison County, which is our neighboring county, has the highest gas taxes in the state. So anyway, maybe that's something that we could, you know, put in this document in the future, to kind of, to kind of make sure that the citizens are aware of that. The next one is the small county surtax, which is just a, a graph there showing how we spend our one cent sales tax, what did that year? And so it's a little circle graph there, treats it from going up. The other one, one more. There's a little circle graph there of where we spend our one cent sales tax. The next one is the solid waste, so we try to tell about our solid waste and the one forty and how that has increased in two thousand six. So we put that in there and showed, showed how the balances, the balances have been moving away in that calendar of the last five or six years. The next page is just a little bit, just another little, just graph about our tourism development tax, our CARES Act money that we had in two thousand twenty-one. And then you can have the construction in progress, construction projects, progress is projects that weren't completed from September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, that had been, that had been started, and you can see the list of them there. There's the projects that you guys were still working on at the end of, some of those have been completed since then. And then the next one, county highlights were projects that you did complete in two thousand twenty-one. And so there's a list of those there, the last page, and then the bottom there is just our additions in capital, our addition to fixed assets for the year. And then the back page is just a, just a contact information for, for the parts. So anyway, you know, if you guys have any questions now, or if you, if you get a chance to look at it, and you have any questions later, you can always contact me or Danielle about it. Go ahead.
Is there something that you intend to put on our website?
So I intend, I do intend to put it on the clerk's website.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that, because I think that everything should be available for the public. There's misinformation. People think we have secret meetings with the budget and things like that. So if we, if we're totally transparent, we've got it online, there's no questions, there's no misinformation passed around, and I just think it would be very healthy for us to do that.
Yeah, yeah, that is the plan. We'll, we'll have a little spot there that people can access it there. Actually, on the inside cover, there's a little QR code there, and if you scan that, it'll take you right to all of our past audit reports, so they're all online. And if you scan that, it'll give you the whole list of them, I think, of past at least four or five years, or something like that is out there. So those are there too. So that's what that little QR code is for, inside the cover there. So.
Gary, I think this is great, that you, that you worked on this. I'm sure you put a lot of time into it, but thank you for doing this.
You're welcome. Yeah, Danielle Welch and Carly Ondash, Laura Brock, and Cindy, my, you know, in my office, we're the team that did this, and that's the one I was on, you know, the one they helped us build too. So we have a lot of people, been in a long time, so. Anyway, the next year will be a little bit easier to do, and so if you guys think of anything that you'd like to see in it in the future, or maybe something that maybe doesn't need to be in it, then just let me know, and we'll work, try to improve it and make it something that the citizens can use and, and, you know, at some point.
I like, thank you, your staff for putting that together. It's quite a data set in a condensed form, but it's to the point, right? It communicates all these costs, what the revenues are, what expenditures are. It's a great demonstration of transparency. So I certainly support that going forward in ways we can tweak it or make things a bit more clear. I think it's helpful, contact lists is obviously something that folks want to know, how can I get in touch with certain sources? I've been, my hat's off to all those folks that took the time. I mean, it's, it's very concise, and it does communicate well, so thank you.
I don't have anything to say, but who knows? You know, all these projects we do, they're not free. And people see these figures, they, they have a chance to really dig into them and do what they need to do. And they can call whoever they need to call at your amount, you know what I mean? When you get to a meeting, you won't get you.
I've made some phone calls, but that's okay. If you're ready to answer those questions. And it's probably a couple of weeks before it kind of hits the community and hits the website. And so we might be looking for it, and certainly, if anybody's got any questions about it, you can always.
Are you going to mail these out? You said you got, you got to mail these out?
No, 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 we're just going to have some available, like we'll put them in places and, and we'll probably mail them to businesses and organizations, and it won't be, it won't be mailed out to the citizens, but they'll be available, like at the courthouse or, you know, online.
Have you put anything in the paper, just kind of notate where to go find this information?
We haven't, I haven't talked to the paper yet, so no, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far with it yet, but we could, if there's some in there, you know, I hear, you know, the line this year, you know, wherever on the website or wherever they're likely located at, probably have something to change or replace it or whatever.
Any more questions? You got one more?
Yep.
The clerk to inform board of domestic violence awareness campaign.
So the clerk's office has partnered with our local domestic violence shelter here, and we're going to be doing a fundraiser in the month of October, the clerk's office will be, and the reason I'm letting you guys know is what we're planning to do is we're going to be selling little, the little purple flags, like the little survey flags, but they're going to be purple, because purple is the domestic violence awareness color. And October is domestic violence awareness month, so we're going to be selling those, and we're going to be displaying them out in front of the courthouse, and people can put their name on them in support of domestic violence victims. And all the proceeds will be going to our local domestic violence shelters. We'll also probably be collecting items that our shelter needs, and they need things. Usually when a, when they get a victim and their kids, you know, they, they don't have anything, you know, they need things for them, because they usually know nothing. They're in a bad situation, and they usually show up with nothing. So we're going to, they're going to provide us a little list of things that they need, and so we're going to have some drop off places, collect items for them. And I just want you guys to be aware and know, in case someone says, well, I have a purple flag, I don't want to live at the courthouse, then you guys know what's, you guys know what we're doing, what's going on there, so. And again, all the items we're collecting and all the money to be collected go to our, our local leadership here. So I know, like, even things like coloring book and crayons that you don't even think about, but they need that kind of stuff to, to, you know, for the kids that come there with their parent, it's interviews and, or everything is used, and so, you know, there's a lot of things like that we don't even think about that they, that they could use. So anyway, we're going to be doing that, and I just want to make them aware of that.
Make us aware. What about this village that's doing all justice? Are you going to partner with them?
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't spoken with them about it. I know this village has an office uptown now, I think, but I haven't actually spoken with them about it. Yes, but I have, I've been working with the director.
Better, bigger the better sometimes.
Sir?
See, the bigger the better sometimes.
Oh, yes, sir. More, more, the merrier. This is our first year.
You got more the merrier.
And we hope that, we hope that we can, we hope that we can, that we can help out, and, you know, it's related to our office, because we, we do file domestic violence injunctions and protection orders for filing in our office, and we see it every day. So, you know, it's close to us, and so that's why we, we decided to partner with them and help out, because, you know, we're, we're in it with them, so.
I'm glad you're doing this, because, you know, we have a lot of domestic violence in this county, some of it you don't know about, but it's, it's an issue.
Well, we've had, you know, two, two really bad instances here in the last few years, so.
Yeah.
It's certainly something that we need to bring awareness to and, and help out with.
Item six, board to address the master project.
I updated the list with deadlines for projects that are budgeted for next year, so quite a few of these were moved to next fiscal year.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay, I'll just listen.
I'll give you mine, fine. Just a quick update, the Hodges Park Rehab, the request for quotations for the topographic survey should be on the next agenda. We have to work through Gulf Consortium to make sure we have exactly the right language. It was quite a process that our engineer finished that in time to go on the next agenda. Also, the Shady Grove Comptactor Project, Gary has, Gary, you have, sorry, Gary has ordered, it's a shelter slide project. Gary has ordered some of the materials that we're still waiting on.
We're struggling a little bit trying to find the material for the meeting, but he should have an answer by the end of the week. We ordered one time, then we didn't have an inmate squad, so we had to cancel it. And then when we got the inmate squad back, it's probably been three weeks since it's been reordered. We struggled because we didn't have the manpower.
You think things are coming in faster than they were, say, a year ago?
They are, they are. They told me they were, and dealing with the local vendors and everything, they seem to say that it's on the upturn a little bit better, and the pricing has come down just a little bit on material. Six months ago, or four months ago, it was just, you know, it was up a hundred and fifty percent. But what, when they, people don't buy, they saturate the market, then they have to bring the prices down, down low, so that's where we're at. They're struggling on some of the methods, getting some of the ID's and stuff, but they'll have an update this week.
I bought a ten foot, two for ten other day, I think it was, ten, twenty dollars. I got eight foot left. Somebody need some lumber? Get deep.
The courthouse improvement project was funded by the legislature. I actually made contact with the administrative office last week, and we'll be working through a revised scope of work, because the award was smaller than what we had requested. So I should have an update within the next couple of weeks of where we are with the courthouse improvements project. And we have quite a few road projects that are, want to be started. The courthouse improvement project was funded by the legislature. I actually made contact with the administrative office last week and we'll be working through a revised scope of work because the award was smaller than what we had requested. So I should have an update within the next couple of weeks of where we are with the courthouse improvements project. And we have quite a few road projects that are wanting to be started this year. We have First Avenue, Cedar Island, Ash Street, and McDaniel Road, it looks like. And so people have a very busy year with the road projects. Between the road project and Hodges Park, the next year is going to be pretty busy for them.
And on Ash Street, I know the last report, when I asked not too long ago, they said 23 or 24. So as I talked to a lot of people this year, I told them I would not hold my breath for 23, more than likely 24, maybe even longer. So do you have a perspective on that?
Can it feel like that we can plan for completion in summer of 2023? That may be ambitious, but that's what we're hoping for.
That's going to be a widening, but it won't be a sidewalk, right?
That's a separate, that's a separate project. I'll double check on that and see, I don't believe that includes sidewalks because that was a separate project that we submitted that we have not, we have not received funding for it together.
Excuse me, when I talked to your engineer last week, his, our last meeting, he said they were included from the senior center out to 19.
But I don't think we've received the funding agreement, is all I'm saying. So the funding.
He's requested it, but you haven't received it.
Yes, ma'am. So once we execute a funding agreement, it's when it goes on the, on the list.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Board to discuss county-owned parcels in Steen Hatch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did ask for this to be on this agenda for approach. I think everybody's familiar, this photo of this county-owned parcel. And the reason for having this type of discussion is to make the other board members aware, I have spoken with the Steen Hatch Chamber of Commerce, the president, Mr. Mark Evans, here this evening. And I do have a lot of support from the Steen Hatch Chamber. And I had talked with the Tourism Development Council, and they are in support of seeking out a path forward for greater utilization of this county, this resource that taxpayers own. But that really doesn't have a plan or process to go forward so that it can be utilized. So I just didn't want to start talking with staff or doing things like that without communicating that and kind of letting the board know that we do have this for. Some of those potential projects would be an advanced type center, a band stage and area. I mean, this is a pretty good sized parcel, so there's some, quite a number of usable acres that would be, you know, a great utilization for this community and for this county and obviously the therapists and so. Yeah, I do have a lot of support from the Steen Hatch Chamber and certainly if Mr. Evans wants to speak to that, we can afford him to do it. And of course, the Tourism Development Council certainly sees the potential use and benefit for the county in that, and that's basically what the support is. So I just want to communicate to the board and be certain that there are not any problems or issues in speaking with staff and working with different individuals or a conceptual design so that we can really formulate a path going forward so that we have an understanding as to the use of these acres and then, you know, at that one time, seeking out potential of funding, whatever that may be about. Any questions?
I have a question. Is this the parcel that goes through the marsh?
It's only into the marsh.
Yeah, and so did you, did you get an email from C-HAG?
I did.
Yeah, is this anything connected with?
That is the parcel.
I thought that was beautiful.
Well, let me speak for, we are representing the chamber and we are very interested in moving forward with this, with this property to do what we think we can do. And we're willing to put out some money to, you know, either survey it, some wetland delineation, whatever it may take to get this rolling, to see what we can do with it. We don't really know what we can do with it. But we would like to at least get an answer saying, yes, this is what you can do, this is what you can't do. Because it's, it's 60 acres and there's tons of uplands and there's, there's a bunch of wetland. But as you've seen in the pictures, I mean, you could make it something that's, you know, usable for the public.
The concept is just because it's wetlands or marshlands that it's, it's not unusable, but there is.
Yeah.
Obviously wouldn't happen overnight, but that's the reason why we want to have the board's consensus and support, understanding that we have the chamber.
We, we have, I mean, the citizens of Steen Hatch, you definitely, whatever we've got to do, you know, raising money, whatever we've got to do to make this, at least get moved forward on it. I like to be told, no, not picking me down, I hadn't been told that yet, so.
You didn't tell me yet? Army told me? No, that's what I see, that's the step, that's the step we need to do is we need to start that process, see what we can do with it. Because there is, there is a bunch of uplands in it too.
We just, I didn't want to move staff's attention or do anything like that until the board was in support. And then once we get to having those discussions with uses and what a conceptual design would look like, so that we, we just want to be sure, given this type of resource, that we maximize the future utilization in every possible way.
Is this, is, Mark, do you remember several years ago where it, it might be the same parcel of land that, when we were making these plans for the future of different things that we could do and it was this parcel and I think maybe someone was donating it to the county that you recall?
It got donated to the county. It got donated. The lady from Pearl City donated it to the county.
The county's policy group donated it.
Yeah, I fully support this. I think it would be great. I really loved the pictures that I saw today and I just, I'm proud.
Yes, it could be something to be done. We don't, we don't know what.
Yeah, I mean, so currently it's just a resource that hasn't developed into its fullest potential, obviously by pictures and by public potential use. But before we, you know, kind of got the color of the horse, I want to be sure that the board's.
The board's on the same, we're all kind of looking at the same direction.
And obviously, you know, I'm looking at the different funding potentials, but, you know, we just want to make sure even in the respect of conceptual design, you know, how we want to progress forward and the ways that we can justify that.
On board.
You've got any questions for Mark?
Thank you.
See what kind of uses that could come out of it. I guess the first step would be to see what kind of uses the property you could do with the property.
Well, yeah, I mean, we want to understand that back as far as uplands. And then, you know, once you get a, you know, a couple number of acres that are either classified as lowlands or marshlands, then you may look into the picture type use with elevated trails and things like that. But, you know, just because somebody says, well, it's in the marsh, it's, I don't think that takes that off the table and says, well, that it's not usable. I mean, obviously, for nature of trails or there's different uses, it just will be a bit different process to get to that realization. So, I mean, looking at this type parcel, the resources there, it's, it's going to be a multiple phase project. I mean, there's all sorts of possible uses, but we want to go with that with the staff's support, the board's support, and obviously the public, the chamber is on board with that. We just don't want to go into it half throttle, let's say. We want to be able to understand all of those potential uses and be able to seek out that realization eventually.
You know, the biggest thing that, right now that I'm thinking of is permitting. You know, I can see that as being a deal breaker almost, you know, you know how it is when you're trying to get permitting through any.
It won't be overnight.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, but even in that, I do think there's the possibilities of seeking out that, which may be a bit more legwork in respect of permits, but, but perhaps the uplands, you could be working that as a different phase in, in the project while we're trying to deal with permitting.
Sounds good.
There's a project that Mr. Anderson's going to do right there beside it. It bucks right up to it. You know, where we gave him the street to go to his place there, that's, that's what Mr. Anderson put parcel with, one on, on the east side of it right there. That's his parcel that bucks right up to this 60 acre right there.
I believe he's spoken with staff in regards to that use of this parcel, but I don't think, given state statutes, that things that his attorney might have been discussing were possible. So we're not trying to compete with his development. This is just a resource that taxpayers have that, let's call it a diamond in the rough.
It's the last property owned or county-owned piece of property that we've ever filed in Steen Hatch. That's, that's actually probably one of the biggest facts and facts in Steen Hatch that the county owned, you know.
Well, and, you know, one of the great parts of this are all potential uses, but it's already in the county's ownership. We're not seeking out funding to try to procure this parcel. We, we got the possession of it, which is, and it doesn't mean, you know, let's just slam dunk, but you're this much closer to that realization.
The results, their thinking, all the thinking, all the design, might differ.
Well, I mean, there's all sorts of need and growth in the area. I mean, this, this potential parcel touches all sorts, every facet. It touches the residents there as far as having walking trails or recreation, it touches tourism, it, it, it touches nature, it touches environment. It's got most every piece of it, so we just want to make certain that we can formulate, you know, conceptual plan so that it reaches the board.
You know, I keep hearing stuff about global warming, the state of Mississippi right now in bad shape. Global warming tells me there's going to be a water rise somewhere. That going to be a thing to down there? Have you all thought about that?
Certainly it's right on the go, but I'm not a global warming expert and I can't tell you.
Unless he comes with a suitcase and about $10,000 bill.
Well, Mr. Chairperson, that's the reason that we partnered with Dixie County and Swanee River Water Management for the vulnerability assessment, is, is to get answers to those type of questions.
I think they were saying that was going to be maybe 2024 before the results really were allies, I believe I understood them saying. We'll get some of that information and hope we don't get inundated before that.
Okay, all right. Any more questions? You know, if both of you got anything to say about this? Okay. We'll go to the next one, which is easy, number eight. The board to discuss my own parcel. The board to discuss the collection of disposal of construction debris and limbs.
Mr. Chairperson, do you mind if I stay seated just so I can interact with Gary and I don't, and I can call on him if I need help rather than step to the podium? The reason we put this on the workshop agenda is because, as you know, the, the new ordinance that resulted from the solid waste study eliminates our ability to take CND and limbs at our, at our roll-off site. So in order to accept those materials, we need to formulate a plan to either not accept it or try to determine the best way to charge for those materials. Or there may be another path you want to go. So we really just need to start the discussion about options that are available and we may need to work through them one at a time. I, I wish I had a better option than, than to either refuse them or charge for them, but that is how the ordinance reads. And, and of course, it can be amended, the code can be amended. But I just want to start the discussion so we do have a plan and we can resolve this as soon as, as practical.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, we all know that we're not going to solve this tonight. It's just going to be something that's going to take a lot of time, a lot of legwork. So if it would please the board, what I would like to do is, is just suggest that we have a series of workshops dedicated just to this and nothing else, just this. And whether it's two meetings or 10 or 20, I don't care how many meetings it is, but this is something that we really need to concentrate on solely and we can throw out, you know, we can discuss the issues and the problems and we can discuss the possible solutions. And I would even recommend that we, that we have, you know, those big rolls of paper or whatever and just, you know, as we throw things out there, write it down and really work through this thing so that we, and I believe that we can come up with something that's going to be more workable than what's going on now. And we can really determine exactly is CND a problem? How much is CND costing us? And, but from there, I know we've discussed for a long time, many different ways to address it, anywhere from taking cash to weigh in weight of scale, to sizes of trailers and all of that, and we've just not been able to come to a solution. So I would really like to see us dedicate some time to workshops.
And what you may wish to consider doing is, I mean, I know it's been very convenient for the public to be able to utilize our roll-off sites for limbs and for construction debris. And I understand that. So I know we wish to make it convenient to the public, but I think part of the problem is, is we're trying to put a plan in place for, for nine sites. And I just don't know if that's practical to start with. We may wish to concentrate on a smaller number of areas that can take this debris or we may want to say we just need one area. And again, another choice is we just don't take it.
And that's what we would work through, through these workshops.
Makes sense. Might be three, one in one end, one at the other end, and one in the middle. Of course, now you've got miles as far as carrying CND and limbs to those sites. But that must be a question. Our limbs are not carried to the landfill, not to our children.
No, they're carried to the burn site, the incinerator.
Now, if we get a paper cup or something in that going to the landfill out there, our landfill, is it coming down or?
Well, it depends on what class you're, you're talking about. So currently, almost every load that we take to Ocilla is class one. Now, we do have the capability of segregating or separating class three, but that's the one that I think we've had the issues with over the years, that if that is contaminated with any, my understanding is even a plastic wrapper that comes from a kitchen, if that load is contaminated, then it all has to go to the class one landfill anyway. So the class three is the hardest to manage because if it becomes contaminated, that's when it no longer is considered class three, it's considered class one.
Class one is what? Is that household garbage?
Household garbage.
Okay. Then everything goes in household garbage. You can put a can, you can put plastic.
Right, and then within household garbage, you really have to look at, you know, what's compacted and what's not compacted. So, so obviously, like in class three, you have construction debris. I know Walter, you're about to turn inside out. Do you want to go ahead and talk?
The new law's coming down, says your class three's going to have to be lined.
Sir?
The new law is going to state that you have to line your class three landfill.
Yes, but I'm just talking about our containers and what.
I know, but you're talking about you're hauling stuff down here somewhere to a burn pile or somewhere, you're going to have to line that.
Okay.
In other words, if you don't line it, if you're not willing to put the cost for lining it, making it basically like it is up at Ocilla, then you won't be able to. it, making it basically like it is up at Ocella, then you won't be able to do it.
Okay. We're having a lineup or whatever, but I think just looking at different counties and looking at Madison County and what they've got, their dynamics are a little different than what we do because the landfill is in their county. But their class three is all a haul. They don't haul it to the roll-off site, they go to one location, which is the landfill.
And some counties have a transfer station. I believe Dixie has a transfer station and.
Scramble, they have a scale too.
Right, I'm not sure about Jefferson, but we don't have a transfer station. So it makes it more difficult to try to separate our waste stream. Because again, even though we have class three materials, if they're contaminated with class one household garbage, then it all, then it becomes a class, we have to haul it as a class one.
But then the transfer station would help us separate our class one, class three out.
Well, I believe if it never comes into the site in the first place, then we don't have the issue of trying to keep it separated. Right, Gary?
Yeah, the problem is when they bring the load in, it's usually mixed. That's the issue when they bring that in. If it was separated, it'd be an easy fix, but we very seldom get them loads. That's why other counties, when they got a transfer station, if a guy brings in a mixed load, their per cost per ton can go up to two hundred and fifty dollars a ton by extreme. And that's the key thing, he says, if the public is not on board to separate their stuff at their household, you know, like debris or whatever, it would be hard to work because when they pull up there with a mixed load, you know, what do you do at that point?
Can I ask a quick, what do you do with a mixed load when it goes down there to your landfill?
We send it to Ocella, they take it.
So it goes from the roll-off site, your landfill.
Not our landfill, Ocella.
But, okay, you've got a burn pile out there somewhere.
It's just limbs.
It's just limbs. So how many actual loads of just limbs do you have going there?
Two hundred and seventy-seven a year.
Two hundred and seventy-seven, so it has one coffee cup in.
We, if they dump it, we have to clean it before we can burn it. That's all we can do. We don't know if it's in the bottom, you know, you just don't know, it can get in there.
So how many loads go from there into a class one dumpster that goes to the landfill?
Don't know that, but there has been. If people come in at night going through the trash, they can contaminate a limb bin by throwing it, the material they're trying to take out of the other in there. We try to get it out, but like some of my tenants are seventy-five years old, it ain't feasible for them to try to pull, you know, fifty pounds, a hundred pounds. It's hard for them to get to that. But it has happened, I mean, that's the way it is.
What are you talking about, somebody getting into garbage and contaminating another dumpster?
Yeah, they come in at night looking for drugs and stuff like that in the trash.
And they're almost every night, it costs them.
We've got five sites that probably hit at least three to four times a week.
And so those folks going into those sites that you're talking about, they're loading stuff in and dumping it in there that contaminates.
They can, but they can also pull out of one container and throw it in another while they're digging through.
So if they get it out of one container and throw it in another, then that was class one, that kind of class three container, it went into another.
Bad end or whatever.
They go through the household garbage bag, what they do, Walter, looking for whatever, I don't know, but they go through it, they tear them open and scatter them out on the ground and go through them. And if they get down there and toward them other dump site, out of the light, they get down there in the dark and they go through all that stuff and then they just throw it in the dumpster rather.
Here's a good example, we redid Harrison Blue, put up nice fence, I mean, it looked really good. And the first week they cut the fence four times. I fixed that fence four times in a row.
Have we ever considered putting video surveillance on these sites?
We did, we tried, we're looking at it, but we put up game cameras. Key thing is when you do a game camera, you've got to about almost set it up to get their tag for the sheriff's department. Recognition, they can't. We put up some, we thought we had them hit pretty good, they stole them.
Not only that, you look at the time, I've got cameras all over my property, but if you look at how much time it takes to look at that, to go back and determine when something happened and what happened and you just eat yourself up, you know?
Yeah, we've had the sheriff's department work with us, they put up their cameras and they got it on their phone. And it's, we've got a few, we've caught a few, but it's far in between trying to, you know, they got a lot on their plate.
Seems like there'd be ways to make that work.
Yeah, it's rough, we've been trying to figure it, but.
Well, I think this, you know, everything that we're talking about right now is what we need to be setting these workshops for so we can discuss these, write them down and really start working on it. We could sit here all night and back and forth about this and that and the other, but I think we need to really set up these workshops and get down to the details and work through this in such a way that we can establish some guidelines and results.
Is there still an ordinance that says that debris good in those dumpsters has to be a maximum of four feet long? Has that ordinance been done away with?
No.
Well, it sounds like to me that you're not enforcing your own ordinance.
Well, that was the reason we went through the solid waste study and we went through the whole process to have a new ordinance drawn up. It was adopted and that's my point. We want to establish a path forward so we know what to do if citizens want to bring construction debris or limbs to the roll-off site.
Do you know how many tons goes down there to that landfill?
The burn site, our burn site?
Yeah.
I think she's, I think LaWanda's got an estimation on cubic yard where we based it. Because we don't have a scale.
So year to date looks like nine thousand two hundred and ninety yards haul.
So how much is a yard weight?
It can, let me look and see. We don't, we don't have a scale for that.
No, but you know, there's a formula for it.
There is, and roughly, it could, it just depends on the material, but it could be up to four ton.
A yard?
Four ton in the whole thing, because you got a little debris.
Four ton in the whole.
Forty yard container.
Forty yard container.
Right, right, right. And then how much would a compacted?
It would be ten to twelve tons.
Ten to twelve tons. Oh, I just, I was looking about that site, so I was laying down there, but I was asked to get some data and I've got something, talked to the landfill, I've talked with Jim, I've talked with Pam, I've talked with Tom. Do you know how many tons of class one actually goes to the landfill?
She's got it right there.
What was your question, sir?
How many tons actually of class three goes to the landfill?
So yes, so in two thousand and eleven, there was one. In two thousand and twelve, there was none. In two thousand and thirteen, there was one. You want class three, right?
That's right, so you're talking about one ton.
Yes, in two thousand and fourteen, there was one, none in two thousand and fifteen. Two thousand and sixteen, there were a hundred and thirteen.
What was that, was that a kitten?
I don't, I don't know what that was, honestly. In two thousand and seventeen, there was none. In two thousand and eighteen, there was none. In two thousand and nineteen, there was none. In two thousand and twenty, there was none.
Well, you know, I look at it too and it's basically, last year there was one load that went up there, about three and a half, four tons. And this year so far, there's been one load that went up there, about three and a half, four tons, you know, and you've got a hand of Michael semi hauling what, hauling two pickup loads, you know, and you can buy diesel fuel to get that stuff up there. And I don't have a lot of accurate data, but I've got some data because I've talked with some of the employees. And employees tell me that out of the containers in the roll-off sites, that about one in ten goes through the compact. The vast majority of those over ten go straight to the landfill, not to your burn site, but they go to the landfill. So instead of paying thirty-one dollars a ton to dispose of it, you're paying forty, three dollars a ton to get it. It's called a mixed load. But the other part of that is, is it's not very handy. So your transportation cost is eating you up. And the other thing is, is how many, how many tons of recyclables have we had this year?
I don't know, we could do, we could run that. The biggest recyclable we have is between the metal and I know we were at, we've done probably around fifty-five thousand pounds. The corrugated is the one I'd have to check.
Yes. And I'm talking, I'm talking behind some people that probably not give the best data, but the stuff that's going up there, it's all mixed up. And so you're paying a high price.
Mr. Walter, are you saying that, let me make sure I understand, so if a load is compacted, we pay less than if it's not compacted?
No, if it's compacted, a compacted load is basically class one and you pay forty.
Forty-three.
Forty-three dollars a ton for it, which, you know, to the landfills thing, they haven't increased that kitten fee in fifteen or so years, twelve or so years, you know, the tippies still been the same. Then you got the class three, but we don't have any class three going up there according to the landfill. But we do have class three going up there according to your, and it, you know, y'all can go check, and Jim said he was going to follow one of them, but you can go check and see what's in that roll-off area there in those dumpsters. And watch where they go. At one time, the county had bars welded across the top of those dumpsters so that you couldn't put anything less than four for them. But all of that got cut off for some reason and they don't do that anymore. So now, you know, you've got this stuff that gets thrown in there, it's supposed to be class three, right? And those open dumpsters, that's supposed to be class three limbs. Well, and construction debris, class, limbs and construction debris is still class three. So a contractor brings a load of construction debris up there and, or a homeowner, and he's got a coffee cup loaded over in there, well, it becomes class one because of the coffee cup.
And John, he, last year, he stopped our loads going up there and dumped them on the ground. They had a guy in there checking the loads just to see what was really in the load. And every one of the loads he checked was contaminated where it would not be able to go into class one.
But he didn't take them in there in a class one anyway, I mean, class three anyway. Everything he took, according to what LaWanda just said, is in class one, not in class three. So the point I'm trying to make is your un-compact garbage is going wherever it's going at four tons per truck, which is not anything based on economies of scale. So we're hauling this stuff all around and I'll tell you this, I was told, and I don't know if it's true or not, by landfill people, local people, that dumpster full of newspapers went up there. Well, you know, the county goes to City of Perry and collects their garbage at the newspaper house. This big pile of newspapers, we go collect them, we go haul them out to the landfill, then we load them up and put them in a class three dumpster and haul them to the landfill and we pay a class one fee to dispose of it.
Wait a minute, see, county goes over to city, city?
Yeah, the county goes to the newspaper office and gets all their used newspapers.
We recycle it.
But they don't get recycled.
They do, but when you're looking at recycling, there's a lot of variables in there. If there's, if the newspaper, let's say we get them in and they're contaminated, wet or anything, we can't, there's not.
So you're collecting, see, garbage that's contaminated, taking it out there to the site, then loading it up in a dumpster and we're taking it to the landfill and paying class one garbage disposal.
Did he say how many loads we haul up there?
I didn't ask. I just, and there again, I'm not trying to discredit you or anybody else, I'm just telling you for a little bit, I didn't even get a notice about this stuff and I don't know why, but I got three mailboxes, but I didn't get a notice that it was going to be a public hearing.
And I've checked every envelope that have been returned.
It comes in my mailbox. And it's, you know, there's one thing that I wrote when I started here and I'm going to share this with you, even though I'm out of place to do it. For everyone that does evil, hate the light, neither comes to the light, lest his deeds be reproved. He that does the truth comes to the light, that his deeds may be made manifest, that they are wrong of God. Everything I tell you is the piss that I made, is truth. And I'm telling you in the light, to make it exposed so that you can do a better job. That's the only reason, I don't even have any business being up here, I'm an old burnout commissioner. Daddy told me a burnout commissioner was worse than an old dog. But the information that I've got, stored in my head of what's left of it, tells me that we doing something wrong. You can have all the workshops you want to do. I can tell you some stuff and I will, that put me on the agenda for the thing, I've been trying to get up with you to get on the agenda, but I'd like to come back and give you some more data. But the way, and I was just sitting here reading, the way you're going to solve this problem is reducing the waste stream. You're going to have to reduce it. I just pulled some data sitting here, I ain't even looked at this, I just pulled some data. You know, when I started going to the thirteen county regional landfill study, we generated approximately five pounds, five point three pounds per day per person in Florida. Governor, Bob Graham was the governor at the time and he said, we're going to address this program to the issue and that's how we got into it. But now we generate in Florida eight point three pounds per day per person. I mean, this data that anybody could pull up. But if you look at what we generate that goes to the landfill, not counting what the city takes, excuse me, takes to the landfill, not counting what we take to the burn pile, it's way over that. Why does Taylor County generate more garbage than anybody else in the state of Florida? I'm not saying that that's fact, that it's anybody else in the state of Florida, but I'm stating that it goes way over eight point three pounds per person because that's just what's reported up there at the landfill, that ain't got nothing to do with all this other stuff. So what are we doing wrong? I went to SCOTUS, Buckeye, to learn how to do failure analysis. And the only instructor told me at the beginning, he said, I'll tell you what's wrong, I'll tell you what the root cause of every failure is at the end of this study. Well, I was stupid enough to wait for the end of the answer. He said, Adam's first sin. You see, that's all of our problems, we're not perfect people. We do things out of depravity. I learned, and I used to go around and speak to people, I've shared this with some of y'all, I used to go around and speak at the qualms and other places. And one of my key analysis, key things was, people don't want to deal with garbage. They want to zip tie around it, close it up, county take it and give it. They want to put a zip tie around it, close it up, county take it and give you a benefit. That's what they wanna do. And that may be where you wind up heading. That may be where you wind up doing. That may be the quality of life that residents, the majority of the residents of Taylor County want. Maybe, if it is, then so be it. But if you really want to, if you really want to be reasonable with just, or practice, just do away with everything but your compacted garbage. Put everything, put the limbs, put the dead dogs, put all of it in that compactor. And you compact it and get that tonnage of where it needs to be before you haul it and take it up to the landfill and pay a class one disposal fee. And you'll come out cheaper than what you did earlier.
I have a question. Can you have a, um-
Hold on a minute. Someone, go ahead.
I appreciate you being here, Walter, because we don't know everything. You don't know everything or nobody else knows everything. But that's why I like citizen input, because if we work together, we might can, we might can come up with some viable solutions. Now, with the workshops, well, let me go back, let me just go back. And I mentioned in this board meeting not too long ago, that I felt like that we should do a root cause analysis before we increase the assessment. And so that's why I voted no to not, uh, to put that big increase out there. I also voted no for hunting counts to not pay the full thing. So until we can figure out what's causing these issues, why are we losing money? I'm not gonna vote for an increase in assessment until we can figure out the problems. And that's why I wanna have workshops. We're not gonna fix this here tonight. We're not gonna fix it in one workshop. But there's all kind of things, and it may be some of the things that you just talked about. But until we get together and really work this, we don't know what the answer is gonna be. So, Mr. Chair, if we can just schedule some workshops immediately to start working on this.
One of your resources is of the counties.
Say again?
Other counties. One of your resources is other counties. Go, go, go. I heard somebody mentioned, uh, all the other counties, uh, that they want, you know, go look and see, I think it said that Madison County hauls all of theirs to the landfill.
They don't take no limbs and they don't take no C and D.
Their dynamics are a little different. Landfills in their county and they, they don't have the big dumpsters like we have at our roll-off sites.
Yeah, they, they got big dumpsters like we got it from, well, they got, uh, I guess it's compact cans.
They have the compact cans.
They all have the compact.
They don't have the large cans on the hill.
They've got roll-off sites. I don't know what kind of cans they got because I don't use the regular commercial site.
I think they're twelve yard. I think they're around twelve yards, somewhere around there, sixteen yard.
But you thought everything's compact?
No, they, they've got small cans scattered through. If you pull in there, they got a compactor, but if you bring in small debris, a little bit, they put it in the camera. If you pull in there with a trailer, they send you to Ocella. So just go along, we, we don't deal with that.
That's, that's the best thing you can do. But, you know, it's just send, send everything to, to Ocella except for the class one. But, you know, there again, that depends on the quality of life that we, you know, that we want in Taylor County that may be more expensive. There's one thing that, that, uh, well, uh, I'm looking at a total from Madison County right now and it says that, uh, Madison County collected, uh, sixty-nine point five tons of class three, six, uh, sixty-seven point twenty-eight tons of, uh, construction and demolition material and six thousand three hundred and thirty-five point fifty-six tons of household garbage. That's what the data that I got from the landfill says. Jefferson County is the same way. They got, they are taking class one and class three of their landfill.
But, I mean, I don't, then you're gonna have to have somewhere for them to take the class three material. I mean, I, I mean, we can relate to Madison County, but the landfill is in Madison County as county. So they can run across the county and drop it. If we don't have somewhere here in Taylor County for them to drop it, you're gonna find class three, you're gonna find class three material dropped up every side road and dead end that there is because they're not gonna drive all the way to Madison County.
I can't support, I'm not gonna support telling folks to drive from Steen Hatchie to Ocella. That's not an option. I'm not supporting that. They passed and I, I understand your point, but I also understand the mileage and how large this county is and the service that our residents expect. That's what I'm trying to reach. I, I've talked to a number of residents. I have not talked with one resident that's told me to cut the service. And if we tell those folks that you're gonna have to take all that Ocella and you're cutting the service. So I can tell you, I, I'm, I'm more than glad to have the workshops and understand what all the facts are. But in respect to just saying, we're just gonna stop taking it, you will not have this commissioner's support for that. I think, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say stop taking it. That's what was, that was part of the discussion.
But what I was, what I was saying, we just put it all in, under the compact. Because that's what's killing you, you're not compact.
Right, but I don't know what the cost of a compact would be for that class. I'm sure-
Everybody got the same.
See, that's why I'm saying certainly you need a number of more data sets.
The quality of service is what you're talking about. The distinction between putting in four-foot pieces or allowing it to be any length or any size or whatever.
Well, I understand the practicality of small pieces so that they don't get hung up in the loads and you wind up bringing trash back from Ocella because the drivers can't get that out of the, the containers. I, I certainly understand that pretty clear. And so I, I can agree that it should be three foot so that there's no chance to four foot. That's fine, another foot. But there's no chance that you're gonna haul the tonnage to the landfill and then something gets lodged or wedged in the container and you bring it back. I mean, so I understand the practicality of that and how that serves.
All, all I was saying was if you put everything in that compactor. How would you put a couch, how would you do a couch and stuff like that, mattress?
How would you do what?
Couch or a mattress or something like that. Couch?
Couch. So, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know about a couch and I don't know about an old mattress and I don't know about a lot of things. But I want to say that the, that if you-
Basically, go back there.
Start, go ahead. I, I took it to the chief, I'm sorry.
My question is, we, we have professionals, Waste Pro and all of those that haul garbage, does that alleviate the burden of the county financially? Or do they, do they take on that burden for household garbage? And should we possibly be promoting something along that line?
Promoting?
Right, because right now, it's kind of held discovered. You see this little garbage company working over here, this one over here, help we ever try to really go out there and promote it, count and why to get, get rid of the household garbage so y'all aren't having to contend with it.
Will you tell me what she said? I didn't hear anything she said.
I think, and if I can translate, I think what she was asking was if you wish to reconsider curbside service or which was-
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about in these workshops. That's one of the options. We're not gonna solve it tonight. So, you know, what I'd like to do is let's go home, let's, let's schedule some workshops and then let's come back and start working through this. We're not gonna fix it tonight. We're just spinning our wheels tonight.
Okay. But listening to different ideas from different folks. Were you through with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jamie, you say it, come to me.
I mean, when we do the workshops, I mean, we, we really need to stay on track and understand, you know, if we are gonna do a transfer site or if we're gonna do curbside pickup, identify where that's gonna be. You know, if it is a transfer site, we need to identify where that's gonna be that's best for all citizens. And I'm gonna say that I don't think nine transfer sites is sufficient or efficient. You know, I mean, like I say, you got, you know, today, Madison County, I'm just using them because they're, you know, similar county to us, they have one site, which is the landfill. And there's nothing wrong with us having one site that potentially just dropped to class three material. And then we move it from there to the landfill. I must speak, uh, we did do a survey with Waste Pro, how many times? Twice or three times? Basically, the size of the county, especially now with gas and everything, they couldn't make it work on paper. So they said it wouldn't work. They tried it. They will work. Curbside down in Steen Hatchie and rural areas.
Chair, I think the last time they looked at it, they, um, it may not have been affordable, but it would require mandatory service.
Yes.
And, and that was a concern from what I recall.
I'm thinking with the gas pricing and everything else, it's elevated. It would be, uh, financially would be pretty high to even look at it, I think. Because you look at, clear down from, you know, your data dear to clear to Steen Hatchie, they would take on the whole county. Now, that doesn't say in the future, might be some option there with the way people are moving in, but you didn't have the people sustaining the cost of what they needed to hit every side county. I see Waste Pro does do the, you know, businesses dumpster wise.
And if I'm not mistaken, I heard that Swatting County just maybe went to curbside service.
I'm not sure on that.
I don't know that they've awarded it or not. I think they did.
I know they're redoing their assessment and stuff like that, a couple of them on because everything that's hit them elevated, gas and everything.
But something to consider, even if, even if these services only offer the household garbage collection, we could craft an RFP to include a couple of transfer sites or a couple of sites for C and D larger items. I mean, we can really, we can really drive that, steer that ship any way we wanted to.
Can we be an option?
Right.
A couple of roll-off sites.
Or however that works. Well, honestly, if you go to mandatory collection, then I think that, that we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have county-run roll-off sites. They would run the entire service. So they would do the collection and transfer the materials, but then we could ask that included in that, they, that they give us, that they offer a service for C and D and sofas and couches and limbs and all that.
We're talking about handed over to a third party group?
Yes, yes. Privatize it.
Run up and solve Waste Program.
What's happening? But I understand, you know, in the county, we've had a number of problems with getting our businesses serviced recently as far as they're backing up and the shortage of labor and all the rest.
Not as much in the last, um, I would say, three to four months. There was a time period that they were going through some, a pretty rough transition.
A number of businesses missed service for multiple weeks.
Correct.
So that's one of the dangers of having, you know, and that's a benefit of having, you know. Yes, sir, I, I would agree. I wanna get, I wanna give you one more piece of information. Uh, when, when, uh, Taylor County started having to deal with lined landfills, we had oaks all around here we put garbage in. Randy Lance, playing football with me and Jim, uh, came to me and said he wanted to put a recycle center here in Taylor County and he built that building down there. And he originally agreed to pay us eighty thousand dollars a year to sort the garbage and pull the recyclables out. And then he wanted us later on, he actually gave us for forty thousand, I think, in the end. He wanted us to pay for cost avoidance. Uh, basically, if he pulled out so many tons of garbage that we would pay a certain fee for what he pulled out instead of having to pay the regular tonnage fee that would go into the landfill. And we didn't ever go that way. But I asked him one time, I said, Randy, how do you, how do you justify what you're doing? How do you do this? I mean, you're, you're, you're taking, I mean, everybody knows you can sell aluminum cans, but, but you're taking metal cans. He said, Walter, he says metal cans weigh more than aluminum. He said, I don't get the three cent a pound for the metal cans, I get ten cent for the aluminum, but three metal cans weigh as much as, I mean, one metal can weigh as much as three aluminum cans. So I can get just as much for the metal that you get. And then, then the other thing that he told me, he said, you know, he said, I'm gonna be honest with you. We reduce a bulk of the garbage by compacting. I said, how can that do? Well, go up there and look around them compacters. All that juice runs out of it. And all that stuff that runs out of it reduces the weight of it. You see, compacting it, going to, uh, uh, transfer stations where it's compacted and going down the road, you know, has a lot of benefits, a lot. It probably will be expensive, but I don't know that there's anything more than reducing that waste stream that's gonna do you much good. Thank y'all for letting me run off with the mouth about this stuff.
Hold on a minute. Wasn't that down in Hampton Springs where that transfer, that, uh, transfer station was, where they were sold and they got it?
Down, uh, down at roll-off site?
Yeah.
I mean, down at the old landfill?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a recycle center. That was the original recycle center. And when that was going on, we had a, uh, I, I got the tractor there at the house. I bought it from C. Twain who bought it from the county. But we had a tractor with a, like a rotor vator out there on the side of it. And we took all the chickens out, all the chicken houses and all crab ways and organic stuff, all anything else that come out there. And we had a chipper and we chipped up the wood stuff and we took the chips, that stuff, and we put it in a windrow and we stirred it. According to, uh, our C and D council's recommendations, we, we did that and we made compost and sold every bit of it. Every bag of compost, compost that we generated, we sold it. But the concept of recycling will never go over, I don't think. My mother-in-law, ninety-six years old, every can of tomatoes, every can of corn that's opened in the house, washed, and you could eat out of it, drink out of it, it's that clean. Every paper bag is put here, every plastic bag is put there. And it's my wife's responsibility to load her up and take her out there and she goes and puts it in those things just like you got there. And you know what the sad part about it is? Because I know where that's going. It's going to the same place that the rest of it's going. They're not recycling that stuff. You know why? Because it's cheaper, the landfill. The, if you look, if you go to the library and pull up the county dressing room, the E. study, and you'll find that was done in lots of county that we were part of, you'll find that no matter what you do with garbage, you got to have a landfill. And based on economies of scale, the more garbage that you put in the landfill, the cheaper it is to operate. So, just landfill. But I think you're gonna run into problems with the class three because even at the Ocella area landfill, Frank Derabi, who somehow another got wind of, after he talked to you, Jamie, and, and, uh, talked to, I don't know, I accused him of having a meeting out of the sunshine. But he, he, uh, he really jumped up and down. But anyway, I, I had just inquired about some things at the landfill and Frank spent an hour conversation with me trying to get me to keep my mouth shut. And that ain't the first time. They, when, they were trying to collect sand down there, get a bid for the sand. You know, I, I got a sand pit up there and he wanted me to bid on it just so that, that Sam would have a competitor, Sam Boy would have a competitor. And, and he just did unet the things like that. But anyway, taking it to the landfill is gonna wind up being your best bid and you're gonna wind up paying class one tippity fees because Frank told me that they were going to be required, and he's into those laws, they're gonna be required to start putting liners on a class three garbage collection. So just make that stuff where you can compact it. That's all I got to suggest to you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to throw this out there. He has suggested that you compact everything before you haul it and that would save a lot of money. Why not try that for the next however long it takes you to have your workshops and figure everything out and see how much money it is saving? I mean, it's worth a try.
We can't.
We can't make a decision tonight on that.
Well, if I could, Ms. Diane, if I could- Well, if I could, Ms. Diane, if I could comment on that, I think, and Gary, I may need your help. I think the challenge with, we can't compact everything, we can't compact a sofa, a bed.
Well, everything that you can.
We try to do that.
And we try to do that now.
Usually, they're on what a compactor could compact.
Right.
What you put in there, and it's designed for household trash, basically. So if you throw anything like treated lumber in or anything like that, you would have a tendency, it could damage that because it isn't designed for that. It's not that strong to compact heavy stuff, like we get, I don't know, wood, we get all kinds of debris that a compactor could not.
What do y'all do with your construction stuff, treated lumber and that sort of thing?
We have to, we have to haul it to the landfill.
And they take it at the landfill?
Yeah, we can't burn it, it's illegal.
Although you can't burn them.
What would be the maintenance cost for those compactors of the three, y'all?
They're high. Maintenance, they're pretty durable and everything, but you got to take care of them. It's like if you had a one-ton truck, you would put three tons in it. It's basically the same way, they're expensive, and they're, they're pretty durable, but if you abuse them, they're priced, their parts are pretty high on them. They're a little painful to get to.
So, so what is the, the weak point in using the hydraulic unit?
Hydraulic is designed, it, it will push a lot and everything.
But it's got a, a, a.
Pressure.
It's got a relief asset on it.
It does.
It won't go over a certain point.
But I have noticed that, like with ours, they have a tendency to try to fill them as much as they can, and sometimes it'll bust the seam in the can, we have to go back and re-weld it. They're pretty durable and everything, but there's a lot of stuff that you can't put inside that compactor.
Well, it's busting the seam in the pressure, it's got a relief asset to it.
Yeah, you had to turn it down.
I don't care what you put in there, you put a tube for it, that compactor, that compactor handle, I remember the specs of the garbage can. Anything you put in there, whatever you put in there, that's high, that compactor, that's not fix and die.
Okay, thanks. Looks like we need to have a workshop to put on, jobs along, at the September 6 meeting, we'll bring some dates out. Okay, all right, anything else coming for this call? Do you want it?
Mine muted.